Okay, at seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just make a note that Kevin Gardner is absent tonight. Moving on to old business, approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of June 17th, 2025 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 17th, 2025 as presented.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda?
Morning, gentlemen, or good evening, excuse me. While I do support some growth, I do not think it should come at the expense of taxpayers. This prompts an important question. What types of development does this community truly desire? Many individuals appreciate the small-town atmosphere, while others advocate for development akin to Wyandotte County. Wyandotte County has experienced variations on its total mill levy, according to the Kansas Department of Administrative Website, Administration website. Kansas City, Kansas Community College, KCKCC, constitutes 16% of property taxes for residents of Wyandotte County. It is often overlooked that a community colleges are independent taxing entities and do not pay any property tax. For Kansas City, Kansas, the KCKCC expands an additional 25 mills in addition to the city and county mill rate levy. Kansas City, Kansas currently has a mill rate levy of 155. Lansing City has a mill rate levy, mill levy rate of 139. With the adding of an additional estimated 25 mills, it would increase it to an approximately 164 mill rate for Lansing City. Here is a breakdown of what an average taxpayer will pay for the property taxes for a home assessed at $300,000, times the 11.5% from the Kansas Article 11, Section 1. That equals $34,500 in assessed valuation. One mill levy is approximately $35, so $35 multiplied by an estimated 164 mills means that the homeowner would pay roughly $5740, $5,740 for that home if KCKCC is established in this community. Recently, Wyandotte County residents filed a formal complaint because the college raised the mill levy above the revenue-neutral rate. It stands to reason that taxpayers do not want another taxing entity added to their ever-increasing property taxes. With the most recent past valuations of property taxes in Leavenworth County, the county of Leavenworth will have $2.1 million in the new revenue added to its budget. This KCKCC project needs to be placed on a ballot. Let the people's voice be heard on this issue. We need commercial and industrial growth to offset our property taxes, not more taxing entities. I will leave you with First Samuel 1749. Then David reached into his bag, took out a stone and slung it, striking the Philistine on the forehead. The stone sank into his forehead, and he fell face down on the ground. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. I will correct that. The city of Lansing's mill levy is 41. I think that's a county is the total.
Thank you.
Yeah. New business. Item number two is KCKCC lot purchase. Kansas City Community College President Dr. Greg Mosier is here tonight to update the council. So, Doctor.
Thank you, Mayor. The council members, I thank you for the opportunity to come and share an update on what KCKCC is doing and our thoughts and our plans and really opportunity to help grow Leavenworth County. I've put together a few images that were created when we were looking at the original set of property, the original property. So you can see when they are, they have a date of 2021. So this is one of the designs that we looked at for the KCKCC Leavenworth County location. This is the front end of it. This is looking from the backside, looking at the different labs and such. KCKCC offers a tremendous amount of different programming, a lot of them in the technical sector around advanced manufacturing, construction, HVAC, welding, where students and graduates make very good livings, and I would say careers from what they learn. Many of our graduates in these areas graduate with a one-year certificate or a two-year degree and make $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 a year right out of the gate. So that's a lot more than most bachelor degree program graduates make. I share this image with you kind of as an inspirational thought. When I build projects, not only do I make them very functional, I'm very focused on the aesthetics of the project as well and what it will do for the community value that is the properties around it. So this is the building that we're building downtown right now. It is under construction. One of the things that we were looking at is we looked at providing additional educational programs and services in Leavenworth County is this one had to come out of the ground first. So when we did this one, when we started, we've been working on fundraising for it for the last almost six years. We have raised over $67 million in total for this project. The project is a total of $75 million. So that percentage you can see is very significant. That includes funding for also our partners who we share the building with, who are owners in the building. Community American Credit Union is by the trees on the left. And Swope Health, who provides federally qualified health care to indigent populations, is the entire fourth floor. So when we talk about those dollars, we're including them as well. We've obtained the entire block for this, so we have additional buildings. This is our technical education wing. It includes automation engineering technology, where students who graduate from that in an eight-week certificate, eight weeks, are making $55,000 to $60,000 a year. We also have a two-year program where they're making close to $100,000 a year. We're also going to do commercial construction technology program in here as well. So now this is out of the ground. The tech building is just about boxed in. We have a roof on it. Parapet's on, eyebrows on, and they'll start to really box it in here pretty soon. So this had to get going so we could really focus on Leavenworth County. I share this image with you as well. This is the student housing that we built on campus for our students. It's 260 beds. It is full every single spring for the next fall semester. So in May, we are full for the August timeframe. Again, focusing on not only the functionality of the building, but the aesthetics as well, because that's very important. This is the courtyard side, the backside of student housing. So again, just for image and building quality. The current land that we have purchased from the city of Lansing is in the red shape there. It is the ideal location, particularly because we provide education and technical training to a lot of the high school students, which we will expand on greatly. So being in between Leavenworth High School and Lansing High School, where the buses don't have to get on the freeway or anything like that, it's very safe, is an ideal location. What we're trying to do is offer our technical and our transfer degree programs to the high school students under dual and concurrent enrollment, where the students will graduate from high school and they'll graduate with a degree or a certificate from KCKCC at the same time. That saves the taxpayers and the parents of those students tremendous amounts of money because those programs are paid for under other state funding opportunities and such. When we were looking at this and talking about some of the neighbors that we might be working with, we noticed that we're a little kind of, little tight on that north end. And it just made me think more that we could use a little bit more space and it would provide some additional opportunity to the county as well and to the city of Lansing. So we started having a conversation around purchasing the three additional acres in that yellow box. It's roughly one acre wide by three acres deep. So by doing so, this is just kind of an overhead view of the current location. The footprint's a little bit different than from the front image, but you can see where it would sit on the land. One of the things we talked about in what we're doing downtown is doing a community workforce center. So pulling together workforce organizations to really collaborate with each other, to share space, to be very economical in the functionality of the building that they reside. And this would be one possible use for that space. So I took where what we have now, just kind of built it out in Photoshop so you could see a visual looking straight down on the property of what that might look like. So we would expand the parking lot a little bit further to the north, do the community workforce center with a covered walkway in between the two buildings so that it's all weather accessible. We would look at partnering with organizations such as the Chamber of Commerce, Workforce Partnership, SBDC, and other organizations that could really benefit from this cohabitation in this one space. Several of these individuals, we've already had conversations with and they're interested. We'd like to get the SBDC up here more so we could offer those opportunities into the community and then really use that space very wisely. In general, when we put this together, these are the programs that we looked at. So HVAC, electrical technology, culinary, cyber, IT, construction, welding, CNA. So from the technical programs, all of you are very well aware of what the value that these bring to the graduates and the earning potential. And then also our general education classes, a one-stop shop kind of for student services and the main student services area, and then some other space, collaborative space. So in total, it's about 76,000 square feet. One of the things that people don't truly understand is the economic impact that a community and technical college brings to a community. One of the greatest things that we do, we don't pay a sales tax or a property tax, we create taxpayers. Every single year, we create taxpayers. For example, the Panasonic cohort that we just ran 56 students through this last spring semester, they're all making $55,000 to $60,000 a year. That one semester for that one program is over $3 million in new income. We did an economic impact study in 2023, so looking back at 2022, you can see, and we'll dig into the details, employee spending impact is $7.6 million. Alumni impact of spending is $50 million. Now, this is all just for one year. This is just 2022. So the total of $58 million, we're supporting 890 jobs. So that is real economic impact. One out of every 39 jobs in Leavenworth County has been supported by KCKCC. And we'll dig in. Here's where those numbers are derived. And this is a professional study done by Lightcast and National Leader in Economic Impact Studies. So in that year, we have 745 full-time and part-time employees, 10% live in Leavenworth County. Our payroll is right at $41.8, $42 million. And when people have that income, then they're able to spend it in the communities in which they live. So the employee spending is calculated at $7.6 million in the county, supporting 141 jobs. Alumni impact, when you look at the students that we have ran through our programs and created really great careers for them, we have thousands of students living in Leavenworth County, graduates. So as a result of that, those individuals receive higher earnings, increased productivity, and businesses for themselves. So in that one year, our alumni created $50 million for Leavenworth County. That's supporting 749 jobs. So in total, KCKCC added $58.1 million in income to the Leavenworth County economy. And a lot of that, there's a lot of growth, a lot of expansion going on right now in Lansing, and that's where we're going to see a lot of future growth as well. So as Wyandotte County fills up, the next place that these businesses are going to go is Leavenworth County. And then it's going to come right up seven. So we're getting prepared for that and help to prepare the county. So we would really like your consideration on these additional three acres. We think will really benefit the project and it'll benefit the city of Lansing and the county as well. You know, I just leave you with an image of something that it might look like, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
You say you have 745 employees?
In 2022, we did. We run right about 730 to 740 employees.
Now, how many of those are going to be in the Lansing complex?
Well, it depends on the programming that we offer, but it doesn't necessarily have a relationship to the income that's generated for the city of Lansing or Leavenworth County because it depends on where they live. I don't have a staffing number. I could follow up with that. I'd be happy to do that.
I was just looking for foot traffic calculations.
It would be significant. Yeah, it would definitely be significant.
Because that might help our economic development, saying we're going to have X number of people working in the area.
Right.
When do you plan on breaking ground? Do you have any estimate?
Well, there's two things that we need to look at, and we get questions on what is the timing? And then what is the funding source? And they really tie hand in hand. So now that we have the downtown project out of the ground and going vertical, our focus really is on the city of Lansing and Leavenworth County site. We need to identify what that funding source is. Wasn't able to track the gentleman's percentages on the mill levies and such that was up earlier, but they don't really coincide with the numbers that I have. But we need to find two sources or two reasons for funding. One is the capital to build, and then the other is operational. We've had conversations over the years about a possible mill levy. We know what the appetite is for that. We've had conversations about maybe a county-wide sales tax. We need to have some more conversations with the county clerk and what would a penny sales tax generate annually so we could support this. KCKCC does not have a mill levy in Leavenworth County. I wasn't sure if it was mentioned that we do, but we don't. It did maybe 15 years ago, so people have a really good memory when it comes to taxes. So like, oh, I know, I saw that on my tax bill. And they go home and check. It's like, well, no. So conferring with your clerk, it was probably about 15 years ago when it was a statewide mill levy for community colleges somehow, but I'm not sure. So we need to look at funding sources and how much of the revenue could be generated? Do we do a bond? How do we go about doing that? And that would help determine our timeline. I'm looking, also interested in doing some fundraising, is very successful for the KCK site, bringing in over $50 million just for the college's portion alone and philanthropic dollars and state dollars and federal dollars. I know that's not an answer. I apologize, but those would be the determining factors.
Once you get up and running, what, on a daily basis, what would be the foot traffic? 100, 200?
Oh, no, we'd have 300 plus a day going through there in the different programs with the high school students, the employees, the evening classes. And if we were to do a collaboration workforce base there, you can see people coming in to try and get skilled up or learn where do they get skilled up, learn what jobs are available, do some, it could be an area for presentations that would draw foot traffic in as well.
So, I have talked to you before. I grew up down the street from where you're at now. I got to get down and see what you're doing.
Yeah.
But when my, when my kids were there, they were offered the Presidential Scholarship. Is that a program that's still going on or?
It is.
Might explain to the people what that is?
The Presidential Scholarship is for students that have and maintain a certain GPA as they come out of high school. I believe it's a 3.5. It's a very high prestigious award, so, yeah, it's great.
That's a lot. I just wondered if you still had it. Made a difference for us.
We do, and the other things that are helpful, we have the Kansas Promise Scholarship now. That's for a technical program. If you agree to stay in the state of Kansas for two years, it will pay for all expenses. The SB 155 or the Excel and CTE is the one that helps pay for high school students to get a technical certificate or degree from a community college. It will pay for those expenses. Our average, we're very inexpensive when you think about colleges. Our tuition rate, our standard tuition rate is $106 a credit hour. So in a year, you're looking at about $3,100, $3,200. The federal Pell Award is about $6,500 a year. So you can go all the way through a community college program completely debt-free with the resources that are available.
At one time, was your automotive, did you buy one of the old dealerships and have your automotive tech down there?
Yes, sir. We still have it. It's full all the time. So we do automotive technologies, which is the mechanical side of it, and then we also have a collision program as well.
I talked to a graduate the other night who's going down there for that.
Yeah, it's a very strong program.
She's excited to be going.
Oh, good. Yeah.
Which I thought was kind of cool.
Yeah. I mean, our students get, you know, picked up really before they graduate, and mostly all of our technical programs.
I have a couple of comments. When you look at the state of Kansas and you look at community colleges that are in towns, Coffeyville, Pratt, Dodge City, would it be a true statement that they have significant economic impact on those communities, especially the smaller communities like Pratt, Coffeyville?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, the community college system, and especially in the state of Kansas, we are the economic engines of our community. So for every engineer in a job, there's typically seven to 10 technical employees that work in that same industry sector. 50% of the jobs in the state of Kansas require more than a high school diploma, but less than a four-year degree. So that just screams community colleges.
Yeah, my other comment is it's, my son became a teacher, coach, first contract, low 40s. Best friend went through a program. His first job was $86,000.
Yes, sir.
One year.
Yes, sir.
So.
We had, our students in our automation engineering technology program, that's the two-year curriculum for advanced manufacturing. They're actually hired by the employer, and then they're put into the program. So while they're going to school, it's an earn and learn. They get paid for a minimum of 28 hours a week from their employer while they go to school because they do both the college coursework and then they do their apprenticeship work. But the competition, competition is so fierce, most employees, employers pay them 40 hours a week. So we had a student in his fourth and final semester in the spring, last spring, and he was making $106,000 a year while he was finishing his community college associate degree.
Yeah, this was in 2009.
Yeah.
His salary has increased tremendously since then, so.
Yeah, the, I mean, the path to a six-digit career is in these programs. And you all know, you call a plumber to your house, electrician, or HVAC specialist, or anything like that, it's not an inexpensive bill.
Yep. Community colleges are a hidden gem.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Anybody else have anything for Dr.? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you for coming.
Okay, the recommended action is a motion to lot, to sell Lot 3 of Lansing Town Center's second replat to Kansas City Community College for a total of $95,000.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Call and roll.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number three is planning commission appointment. Ginger Riddle submitted an application to reapply for the planning commission. If appointed, Miss Riddle's term would end on 30 April, 2028. So I need a motion to reappoint Ginger Riddle to the planning commission for a term ending on 30 April, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call and roll.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is Ideatech Telecom phone contract. The city solicited three quotes from providers to modernize and consolidate the telecommunications infrastructure. Ideatech Telecom LCC submitted a proposal that includes hosted telephone system services for 75 users, technical setup and training, and one analog line for fax services. The agreement offers competitive pricing at $1,153 per month with first month free and installation fees waived with a five-year term. The full term would be worth an estimated $69,180. Staff recommends approval of the proposed five-year service agreement with Ideatech Telecom LLC. So I need a motion to approve the service agreement with Ideatech Telecom LLC and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and any related documents.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What are we using right now?
We are using a Mitel system with a provider or a contractor named Towner Communications. The system is at end of life. The company is bankrupt, not Towner, but Mitel is bankrupt, and the service will not be supported after, I think, September or October this year. So we have gotten our money's worth out of the system, and it is time to move on.
Do we do any other quotes with any other companies?
Yeah, we received a number of quotes. This actually was the lowest quote that we got on a monthly basis. We went back to Towner. They quoted something that was significantly higher. I believe it was in your packet. And another company, Spectrum VoIP, not to be confused with us, different company. Don't know why they haven't changed their name, but it is what it is. And this was the most competitive price, so.
Thank you.
This will support 75 users. How many do we have now?
71.
So we're right on the edge.
Yep. And so part of the problem is that over the past year, we have added a number of lines. We can't add them into this. We can't add the fire department into the system. We are stealing lines and phone numbers from other areas in the city to get the pool number up and running. So we're, you know, stealing from our Peter, borrowing from Peter to pay Paul and all that good stuff. So it expedited our need to do this. This was going to be a 2026 project, but we need to do it, and we need to do it now.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number five is Ordinance 1133 Sewer and Solid Waste Assessments pursuant to Chapter 16, Utilities Section 16-11. to Chapter 16, Utilities Section 16-116 and 16-209E. The city council is to be presented with a list of delinquent accounts and the customer's information. Upon adoption by the city council and subsequent publication eleven more times, this ordinance shall constitute a lien against the real estate for which the service is supplied. 114 properties with a total delinquency of $131,429.97 are listed in the ordinance. Staff does not submit this ordinance for assessment until 25 August 2025. Residents are given the opportunity to be removed from the ordinance by setting up a payment plan with the city before that date. So, I need a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1133 for assessment of delinquent sewer and trash bills.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
These people know they're on the list, right?
Mm-hmm. They get delinquency bills.
Because they're all repeat offenders. I mean, the same name, year after year after year after year.
80% of them, yeah, I would say.
Yeah, it's aggravating to know that some people really don't have to pay it, and other people do.
Well, they have to pay.
It goes on the property taxes. It goes on the property taxes, so they pay it one way or another.
Right, yeah, okay. Forced to pay it.
Some of these people will drop off, too. We'll get calls, you know, setting up payment plans, or, I think I looked at one today that just paid, so we'll remove them. And we always, we look at the accounts, like, the day before we're going to submit them to the county, and make sure we don't have anybody on there who has paid or has made arrangements with us, so.
So, if they're a property owner, I understand, can you refresh my memory on if they're renters or?
If they are renters, they'll be submitted to our third collection, debt collection agency, third party, so. Yeah, that's the next.
And that's probably not as big a, we don't recoup as much money. That's the only thing that's bad.
Yeah.
But it's, I understand, you have no other choice.
Yeah. That's our only option. We do send them to state set-off as well, so if they're getting a tax refund, or they work for a government, you know, the state of Kansas, they'll get a garnishment against their wages, so.
Do most of the people that make payment plans follow through?
Um, I would say about 80% of them do. They usually start out strong, and then some of them kind of start to waver a little bit. We have a couple on here who are like that. They were on payment plans, and they just stopped paying, so we're going to go ahead and assess them this year.
But the majority, we, without?
Yeah, the majority of people who get on payment plans, they work with us, and yeah.
Thank you.
Have we have just wrote, had to get to the point, we're not going to collect it, we write it off?
Uh, we do, after a certain number of years, we'll look at it and go, yeah, we just need to write this off. So, technically, what we do is, we'll remove this from their account. We basically write it off to a receivable, once we send it to either collections or to be assessed, and then it's, it comes in as revenue if we get it.
If they don't pay, does it go against their credit report?
If it's with the, with the third-party collection agency, yes. The tax assessments, it's going to, it's going to hit their escrow. I mean, their house payment's going to go up significantly. We'll get calls in, starting in October, asking what the lien is against the property. So, yeah, it can affect their credit there, too.
But if we go to a collection report, do we just lose the collection fee, or does that pass on to them as well?
The collection agency charges a fee on top of what we submit to them, so we don't lose that.
But that, does that fee pass to us, or to the person?
To the person, yeah.
So, they're actually having to pay more if it goes blank?
Yeah. If they call us about that, we always refer them to the company, because we'll tell them what we submitted. But we always tell them, the collection agency has added a fee. And depending on whether they take it to court, there are additional fees for that as well.
So, is it their benefit to pay their bills?
Yes.
Thanks, Dan. All right.
$131,000 is a lot of money.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Any more discussion on this one? All right, I have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. We're switching the executive sessions around, so. Item number six is executive session consultation with the attorney. I need a motion to enter an executive session for consultation with the attorney for the city, which would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship, KCA 75-4319B2, for 15 minutes, starting at 17:35 and ending at, or, 7:35 and ending at 7:50?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Okay.
Make the motion to return to open session.
I have a motion to return to open session. There were no binding actions taken during the executive session. Call roll.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
We are back to open session. So, the new item number seven is an executive session for preliminary discussion of real property transaction. So, I need a motion to go into executive session for preliminary discussion of real property, KSA 754319B6, for 15 minutes, starting at 7:53 and ending at, what, 8? 8?
7.
8/7.
808.
That's what I said, 808. I think I did the math right. Correct me.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
We're executive session.
Yeah, we got, I make the motion to return to open.
Second.
How did he get finished? Open what?
Open session.
I don't want her to be able to.
I have a motion and a second to return to open session. Call a roll.
Mr. Garvey? I'm sorry, Mr. Kowalski.
Yes.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Garvey.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
We are back in open session. No binding action was taken during the executive session. And we are on reports, so. Any department heads? City Attorney?
Another report, ma'am.
City Administrator, Tim.
I have nothing.
What?
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 That's a double take. All right. Well, then, we'll go around the horn, start with Jake.
Yeah, I just appreciate Ginger Riddle volunteering for her time for the Planning Commission. Independence Day celebration was awesome. My wife and daughter and I really enjoyed it. I've been at the pool seven days in a row. Really liked that, too, so that's all I have.
All right, thanks. Jesse?
Yeah, thank you, same thing. Thank you, Ginger, and all of our volunteers. We couldn't run the city without you. I also attended the Fourth of July Festival. It was an awesome time. The rides were awesome. My grandchildren loved all the rides, and, you know, we got them the wristbands, so they wouldn't have to keep buying tickets. And, you know, I think the traffic getting out of there was really swift, thanks to Steve's leadership. He was up there in the main, right there at the stoplight, telling people to get out of the way, and moved down the road. So, good job on Steve's team for guiding the traffic out of there, so that's all I got.
All right, thanks, Jesse. Pete?
Yeah, just echoing what they already said, and just thank the whole staff of the city. They did a fantastic job on the Fourth of July celebration, and just thank you for keeping the city looking great and maintaining everything. That's all I got.
All right, thanks, Pete. Dan?
The LCPA, LCDC budget proposal should be in your inbox when you get home. That is the same packet that they've been going everywhere, so it's already in the public domain. I just wanted you all to have a read ahead, so you can ingest it for the 17th.
Yep.
That's everything.
Okay, Carrie?
I had the pleasure of working with Terry and Tish, and who were those other?
Kristen and.
Emily.
Emily.
And Emily. It was a good time. It was hot, which makes me cranky, but other than that, it was a really good time. And I was just so impressed by all the work that you guys did. That was amazing. And the celebration, the fireworks were awesome, and, I don't know, just a real good, a real feel-good moment. And I would agree with Jake. I love, I will make, I will take the long way home by going down past the pool, because it's, it just warms my heart to see this great structure being utilized the way it is, so very cool. We haven't any more accidents, have we?
None of that kind.
You know what accidents are.
Yes.
Got it, Carrie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, done. Thanks.
Well, again, like everybody else says, a big attaboy for the fireworks, and a special big thank you from me to the staff, all the hard work that you put in, and all the hard work you did out there in the heat and everything. It was great. And I'd like to wish everybody to have a safe and happy Fourth of July. That's all I have, ma'am.
All right, thanks, Tom. And before we get to Gene, I'd just like to thank all the staff, too. It was a great time out there, Fourth of July, or Independence Day Celebration, I'm going to call it, because the Fourth ain't till tomorrow. But it was the independence celebration. And it was great. I thought the fireworks were awesome. I got a lot of feedback on Facebook. Everybody thought it was amazing, so shout out to all the divisions. That, that event takes almost every division in the city to actually run it. And I appreciate the fire department with their spraying out there, because it was 1,000 degrees, and that kind of cooled everybody off, too, so. Gene, you're up.
Yeah, I echo what everybody else has said. Debbie and I also went out and helped with the parking. So, when you got to close the parking at 7:30, you're doing something right.
That's right.
Okay. People thought they had maybe two hours to get there and get set up, but at 7:30, the parking lot was closed, which is a good thing, bad thing. If you didn't get there, you had to go do the bus, which is all right. But just, just know that at 7:30, two hours before the big show, we were full. So, says a lot about the whole program. And with that, I move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Call a roll.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.